We didn't have time to do our warm-up dance before the meeting, though, so.
You know, if it was on a cord, you'd find it easier.
Does your keep, does the thing have a track pad? Can you go mouseless? I'd like my backyard to be mouseless.
All right. Thank God.
Thank God for the mouse.
Okay. You good? City manager.
Greg.
Yes.
Victoria. Okay. Calling to order the Monday, February 24th, 2025, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here from Military Duty at Federalist Fort Bragg, North Carolina.
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the following corrections. Removing items number two, three, and four from the regular agenda, and then adding item number four from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Okay. Anybody want to support that?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Valani. Ms. Mitchell, please call, well, wait, before we go there, any other changes or corrections?
Just question of clarification. Where would that number four from the consent agenda go in the regular agenda?
I'm going to slap it in the beginning. We'll just put it at.
Replace number two.
Replace two.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've come to the public comments section portion of tonight's meeting. You're welcome to take three minutes and tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. When you come to the microphone, please tell us your name and city of residence. Please direct all comments to the chair. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but it doesn't mean we don't care. If your matter needs follow-up from a member of council or city staff, please leave your contact information on, there's a sheet on the table right outside this door, and we will follow up with you. Did I leave anything out? Three minutes. Go. And these are for, this is for anything that's not on tonight's agenda.
I guess I'll go first. Nobody's jumping at the microphone, so. My name's Pat Maslowski. I'm from Berkeley. I live on Kipling. And I'm here, I've writ, I've written down my notes because otherwise my mind goes blank, so forgive me on that. I'm here tonight to address the concern that I have emailed you guys. It's in your emails, but it's not, obviously wasn't in time to really address it here. It regards the Casco Construction Company on 11 Mile. They're currently operating this external machinery in violation, in my opinion, of the general noise and nuisance ordinance. Both of those parts of the ordinance state that the unlawful continued loud noise which disturbs the comfort, health, and peace of others, and it also says essentially interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property or tends to depreciate the value of property of others. So as I go on to describe here, it will depreciate the value of our homes if this machinery is allowed to continue. I'm aware that this is a cabinet-making business that had just been purchased and moved into this space thinking his expansion could be done any which way he wanted, but he never took into consideration that when he bought this filtering system, that he was backing up to homes, my home, 75 feet away. I've lived here 41 years, and the cabinet-making business that was there before was essentially as quiet as could be. Casco does have an original location. It's on East Hudson in Royal Oak, and it's in a strictly industrial area that really backs up to the railroad tracks. He should have thought ahead to enlarge his business over there, but he's growing his business here. Like, how convenient for him. He chose the cabinet-making business. He bought them out. And so now he's transitioning into this huge external sawdust filtering system. And so what they have installed, in our opinion, is, well, it's not just an opinion, but it's unacceptable to continue the way they have it installed. I know they're working on remedying the system's noise, but I know when he purchased this contraption, it was not made to be quiet. It was made for a sawmill, not in a residential neighborhood. The specs alone on this motor would prove that. I don't have the specs on me, though. But before I get ahead of myself, I've given much thought, and I've had discussions with my husband, that I'm wondering, like, what is the city's responsibility in all of this? I know the company submitted plans to expand the footprint, and legally they do have the right to do so. But what I don't understand is how the city did not think that the size of the motor that would be needed to accommodate this hopper system wouldn't be so loud as to violate the noise ordinance that we have in place. I just can't understand it, and I know I'm missing something here. This owner certainly had to have known how loud this system was going to be, and the city should have given thought to it as well. The company manager has asked for our patience, and we respect that. They're trying hard. They're doing things. I don't know what they're doing, but they're doing things to try and reduce the sound. But I really don't hold much hope. It's an industrial-sized filtering system.
Ms. Maslowski, your three minutes are up.
I'm afraid of that. I invite you, I invite you to my home. Honestly, I'll leave my address, so you can come and hear this from 7:00 to 3:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Bob Sutherland, 1877 Kipling. Been in the area for almost 70 years and lived here in Berkeley for 23 wonderful ones. Gee, how do I make this so fast? Somebody here who doesn't want to stand up had something interesting. Imagine walking into your bathroom. Some people are lit up, lit down. She would never have done this. Wouldn't be having this conversation if she was a lit-down girl, but she was lit up. Up above is a small little curio shell with, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Sorry, audience. Right after this happened, I happened to talk to her on the phone, and she said she saw one of her lovely little tiny bent little birds that her granddaughter gets her when she goes on her trips and gives them to grandma. They went, let's see, anybody know plop, plop, fizz, fizz? Oh, what a relief it is, right? This is plop, plop, splash, splash. I'm not worried about the sound. Anybody can pick that up. A DB meter can pick that up. It's the infrasound. It's the stuff you don't hear. These ground vibrations, because whoever built this damn thing put it straight into the ground, no vibration dampeners whatsoever. Forget the motor he's talking about. It's the fan. Yeah, he changed out because the thing's 40, 30, 40 years old. The bearings were gone. My wife can't sleep in the mornings anymore. It woke my ass up, and I have a CPAP, huh? I want it over.
Mr. Sutherland, go back to the mic, please, because it's also for the.
I can't. I'm coming, I'm coming close, but last thing. As you mentioned, class action suits are one thing, but I think zoological actions are important because ever since this thing has started, zero birds, and I mean zero, and, well, thank you, the squirrels are gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Mary Stoy. I'm at 2773 Columbia. I'm right on the corner of Kipling. With the plop up, that was my Cardinals. They're on a shadow box behind my toilet, and it's causing them to fall on the floor or in the toilet. And the pictures on the walls are, you know, slowly turning. That's all I wanted to say. That's what that was.
Ms. Mitchell, have you received any communication to be entered into public comments?
Yes, Mayor Dean. Joshua Hunter Berkeley sent an email asking the city manager where $2 amounts are listed in the budget to actual report.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, January 27th, 2025, and special work session on Monday, January 27th, 2025. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1407. Three, motion number M325, matter of approving a motion deeming the attached vehicles and equipment as surplus to be sold via public auction or disposed of. Four, motion number M525, matter of authorizing the city manager to sign the application for additional service credit purchase for Donna Reed Cronin, approving 24 months of additional service credit. This purchase is allowed by the City of Berkeley Merit System of Human Resource Management, Section 1001.08, and meets all of the requirements of the MERS Plan document, which would allow for this service credit purchase. Five, ordinance number O125, matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Article 2, collection and disposal of Chapter 58, garbage, rubbish, and refuse of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to clarify requirements for containers for garbage versus rubbish, and to clarify pickup times for emptied garbage and rubbish containers. Six, resolution number R125, matter of approving the resolution for update, updated poverty exemption guidelines.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved with the following correction. The resolution R0125, the second whereas, there's just a typo. It should reference MCL 211 dot seven U.
Thank you. Do you have that, Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, is there a support of that motion with the amendment made by Councilmember Henin?
Support.
Oh, okay. Support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black. Dean.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, will you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M425, matter of approving a budgeted purchase of a new street sweeper from Nescon LLC of Mesa, Arizona, in the amount of $360,645.
Is there a motion to approve M0425?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Van Black?
I'm going to introduce our deputy city manager and Department of Public Works Director, Sean Young.
Good evening, Mr. Young.
Good evening. What we have before you tonight is replacement for our current 2016 Pelican, Elgin Pelican sweeper. That unit has roughly 10,000 hours on it, which is pretty high for a machine, especially of that age. We're very heavy on, as far as the sweeping community, we sweep much more than most communities. We're basically on a weekly, weekly pass through town. Most other communities go as low as maybe twice a year, some once a year. You know, it's a very visible action in our, for our residents. As much as we tell them not to put stuff in the street, they seem to always end up putting stuff in the street, grass clippings, that kind of thing, and anything that we don't pick up sweeping ends up in our sewer system. So we really try and get it off the roads. We went through, we looked at many different styles. This is the first, be the first purchase in quite a while that I wasn't personally involved in. We reached out to our maintenance team, operators, our superintendent, Adam Wozniak, was a big part of it. They evaluated many different pieces, many different styles, put it out to bid, came back. I actually closed the door on them, so I didn't hear it, to see if they came up the same conclusion. Both came up, both the group and I, came up with the same conclusion. And that was the Nescon unit. It's out of, actually out of Arizona.
Where they have a lot of dust, I might add.
Yeah, they do. But that seemed to be the best fit for our needs. We do have two sweepers. One is a lighter-duty Badger we bought a couple of years ago. Works great in tight areas, but for a mainline sweeper, it just doesn't, doesn't pick up as well as far as like heavy leaves, heavy spring cleaning, smaller hopper. And having two units does allow us to take one out of service for repairs. What we're doing, when we have one sweeper, is when it goes out of service, which may be a month or two at a time, depending on what you need to do, you're doing a rental at $10,000 to $12,000 a month, which is pretty pricey. Lots of other information, facts, if you need it, but if there's any questions, I'll be more than willing to answer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I had a couple of questions.
Sure. No, go ahead.
We spoke earlier on the phone. So I asked the questions, kind of, this isn't a backup unit. You run both units?
Yes, so certain, certain times of the year, we run both units. Summertime, like August, it's lighter, so we'll run a single unit. Wintertime, we'll sweep when we can. Depends on the weather.
Right.
Like this winter, we haven't swept much, but previous last two winters, this sweeper was out February, January, March. Kind of unheard of, but that was kind of the norm the last couple of years. You know, and by having two units, you're spreading that wear out. If you have one unit, you're constantly throwing those hours on that unit. It takes that service life down quite a bit.
And then I have, I don't have my other notes. I'm sorry. I left them at work. I asked before about sharing with other communities if this is something we've looked into or had a chance to ask other communities about it, and.
We do have a, like, emergency agreement with other cities. But it's not, the sweeper's not really something that other cities share. I know if another city was to come to us and say, hey, I want to use your sweeper six months of the year, three months of the year, I'd be really nervous. It's a unit that, when it's down, it really impacts the community. It's, you know, if they don't see, if they don't see a sweeper out, that's one of the first calls we get. If we miss a sweeping cycle, there's residents, they have that down. You're there on Tuesdays every week. Where have you been? So if we change cycle or miss a cycle, we really hear about it.
And our current sweeper is new, right? It came 2003?
We have a 2023 Badger and a 2016 Pelican. Prior to that, we had one. It was about 10 years old when we sold that, and one prior to that was about 12 years old when we sold that. And those ones, we kept too long. You start looking at parts. I just pulled some numbers this afternoon. In the past two years, we've put about $40,000 just in parts in this, in the sweeper. Now, it's not including labor. That's just parts. And that's not with brooms. Brooms to us are a wear item, just physical, hard parts. It was about $40,000 in parts, and I'll keep for that 2016 unit.
And then this comes out of the major roads?
Yes, so we'd just be budgeted out of major roads.
So are there any projects that are being postponed because of this being budgeted, or?
No, so our next project, we've got one, I think council approved, for bacon, from the engineering for bacon. So that's scheduled, not this spring coming up, for the following spring. So I don't think that would be a postponing any projects. It is, I mean, $360,000 is a lot of money.
Yeah.
One thing we didn't really capture, and we've got to find maybe a better way to capture it, is the resale value on the end. That's not always known at budget time because you don't know what the condition's going to be by the time you get it. Some of these units, you order them, and it's two years out, so it's hard to forecast that resale. With the Nescon unit, they're claiming six to eight weeks for delivery. That's the claim anyways. That's what they put down, but sometimes they tell you six, eight weeks, and it's six, eight months. But just looking at resale on our own, it's six, anywhere 65 to 85 is what we're hoping to get.
For the Pelican?
For the Pelican, yeah. And we're going to reach out to our neighboring communities first and see if they need a backup.
Yeah.
Most of the time, when you get a backup, it's so worn out that nobody wants it.
That's 85,000, 6,000 right now, 100.
What's that?
For the resale of the Pelican.
For the resale, yes, correct. 65 to 85. That's what I'm looking today, and that's what they're selling for. That's what we'd be hoping to get. I don't know if we'll get it, but that's what we're hoping to get. And that'd be sold public auction. You see a surplus vehicle list coming up, and that'll be on something similar for that.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, and just briefly to reiterate something you said, it's, we're sweeping not just for aesthetic reasons. It is to keep things out of the sewers, and if we didn't do that, we would then be having additional time and money spent cleaning the sewers or even having worse problems with clogged sewers.
Correct. So it's, it's much easier to pick the debris up on the roadway versus out of the catch basins and out of the sewers. Cleaning catch basins, it's a pretty laborious task. Time, it takes a lot of time, a lot of manpower. If we can sweep it up off the road and keep it out of the catch basins, that's ideal. It's not always possible. I mean, some of it's going to get down there, but being a combined sewer system, it's much more important to keep it out. A separated storm, if it backs up, you just have a little street flooding. Combined system backs up, you've got a problem. We try and hold water in the street on purpose. We don't want our lines plugged up. Let's keep the debris out of the catch basins and keep everything flowing the way it should be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for bringing this to us this evening and for all your research into its history and the potential going forward. I think you answered one of my questions already. In terms of the, the time of delivery, you said six to eight weeks, but you never know. It's kind of, but it's within this calendar year, most likely, if we were to move forward with this. And unless we'd have it ready for the, the necessary seasons. And I think the point that was raised a couple of times now about protecting the sewers from the overflow of additional materials is really an important one. And I'd certainly like to ensure that we do the best we can to, to get ahead of any potential issue that could affect, affect our residents in particular, right? So I think that's a really good call. Would there be any training necessary for the, for the staff and crew to operate this? Is it different enough than what we have today?
It's pretty different, but this was, the Nescon unit, when we did the demo, was fairly odd. They shipped the unit here and said, we'll be there in two weeks. Have at it. So we swept for two, our staff swept for two solid weeks, no charge. They came in, did the, did some training, spent a day of training, making sure we understood everything. I think because they're newer to the area, they were much more involved and wanted to make sure we understood what was going on, and all the features and all the options. They were the, I do have it here. I forgot to include the bid tab, but they were the low bid. They were 360, high bid was 398, so there's a $40,000 difference, $40,000 difference between high and low. Both the operators, mechanics, had the same, same, that's the machine they liked. That was the machine that was easiest to run. Serviceability looked like it'd be pretty straightforward. And then they actually included a list of their common wear items, so we could price those common wear items ahead of time. And they were much more reasonably priced than the units we've been running.
Okay, that's good to hear as well. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't know if you, what was budgeted for this?
So originally, we had 325 budgeted.
Okay.
We had, in the same account, we had some other equipment budgeted. But looking, taking a deep dive at staffing levels, realistically, if we were to buy that equipment, it takes a lot of staff to run it. And with the newer staff that we have now in the current workload, it just didn't make sense to make that purchase. I mean, it's, it's something, it takes a lot of staff. It was an asphalt milling machine that was on a skid steer. So we're still looking to go forward with the skid steer, which you'll see in a future meeting. But the mill portion, to go and mill that off and put that asphalt back and roll it, you're, you're talking four to five staff members, and we just don't have, we don't have the staff to run that, so it doesn't make sense to buy that. we don't have the staff to run that, so it doesn't make sense to buy that. So we're rolling some of those funds over to this, and the rest is going back to surplus.
Thank you again. So to, to net that out, this would basically be more than covered by not making that other expenditure, the, the gap between the initial budget and the estimate?
Correct.
Okay, and we still have money that would go into surplus based on that other decision with the, the milling machine. Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Young, thank you so much for your thoughtful approach to this purchase. You've laid out, I think, very neatly and methodically why it's necessary. And I just want to mention again, this was an approved budgeted item. And I also appreciate you being able to defer purchase of another piece of equipment, taking in your staffing levels and, and the amount of labor that that will take to do that. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Come to the mic, nope, you gotta come to the microphone.
We have the greatest DPW on the planet.
Agreed. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you so much. Mitch, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M0425.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
No.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black? Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read, I guess, well, whatever number it is now, is it five? Is it?
Three.
Three, sorry. I gotta scoot, all right.
Motion number M725, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a third-party specialized services operating assistance contract between Smart and the city of Berkeley for public transportation services primarily designed for senior citizens and disabled persons. The contract period for this program is from October 1st, 2024, to September 30th, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve M0725?
So moved.
Motion made by councilmember Patterson?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Ms. Van Vlaak?
So I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Dan and his promoted role, which is our recreation superintendent, Dan McMinn, and he's going to handle this item for us.
Great. She, Ms. Mitchell kind of stole my thunder. We're here looking at a recurring contract for specialized services through Smart with the term of October 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2025. This is typical. They do come about this time each year, so this is not of a surprise. The funding for this year will be $23,202, which is the exact same as last year's contract. A little bit about the program, the transportation program is geared for anyone over 50 who's retired, semi-retired. We will take basically anybody who calls and asks for a ride if they, if it's in need. We have three different vehicles. They are all equipped for, with a lift for, lift for wheelchairs, scooters, anybody who can't get up mobility-wise. We do have those lifts available. The boundaries of the program are eight mile and 16 mile north and south. Loser and John are east and west. It's an eight by eight square mile, and we take people to doctor's appointments, salon, haircuts, shopping trips, basic trips to the bank, things that are necessities that need to be done with people who don't have the, the necessary transportation. So the best way to make an appointment is to call the Parks and Rec Department at 248-658-3470. Again, 248-658-3470, between 9:00 and noon, Monday through Friday, and you can schedule a ride. The best piece of information for the person calling is to have the address in which you're going. You know your home address, but we need to know the address in which you're going. It helps with the drivers for maps and stuff like that. Couple of specifics, the ride must originate in the city of Berkeley. All rides must be completed about, by 4:00 PM, and 8:30 is our earliest appointment time. Couple of program numbers, just because they're good to know. In October through December of 2024, we had 810 passengers. Approximately 10% of those were in wheelchairs, had walkers, canes, so we're definitely helping that, those people as well. The buses traveled 3,758 miles and ran for a combined total of 422.75 hours. This program is not possible without our two drivers, Brian Boland and Mike Milligan, who are constant professionals, and I can't think of that, thank them enough for all of their hard work. They take such good care of the seniors of Berkeley, and they care so deeply about them that I just have to shout them out every single time I come up here. So that's the program in a nutshell. The contract, again, same funding as last year, and we love working with Smart.
Well, thank you Superintendent McMinn.
Thank you.
It's a new title. I haven't said your new title yet. Uh, any questions or, yeah, Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, Dan, I just want to say thank you for this. It's such, and certainly thank you to the department and drivers as well. Uh, it's just such an important service, and so many people interact with our transportation system in so many different ways. Uh, and so this is just an invaluable resource that you and your team provide, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vilani? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Echoing Mayor Pro Tem Gavin's comments, I think this is such an amazing service that we provide, and I think about when my grandmother was still on the planet, even though she lived in Pennsylvania, her town had a very similar, and it allowed her to stay independent in her own home until well into her 90s, and it gave us a sense of mind that she could get her hair done, she could go to the grocery store, you know, get what she needed at Giant Eagle, and, you know, just do those daily living tasks, which I do believe helped contribute to the length of life that she lived, because she was able to be independent. So I think for so many of our residents that want to be able to age in place, this is such an incredible service, so thank you for continuing to advocate for it.
Absolutely. The amount of rides we take from the Oxford Park Towers with people who don't have that transportation, that, that senior living is, I feel like I know everybody who lives there just based on riding on the bus and taking trips with them. So I completely agree. I think it's a great program that I love being a part of.
Like them, thank you. I think it's more than just a bus ride. It's getting our senior community together. I've been on the bus a couple of times. It's kind of cramped. But it gets them close, it gets them out of their home, it gets them to their doctor's office, wherever they need to go. But it gives them a sense of outing, but also companionship, and that's invaluable, so thank you.
Absolutely. We also use these buses for a lot of our senior trips, so community and just conversation happens quite a bit. They, one of our drivers took a lunch outing out today, and he said, came back, and he's just like, the amount of talking that is happening amongst them on the, on the bus, it's like, this is so good. It keeps the mind right and keeps everybody moving.
It's community and connection.
Absolutely.
Very, very important. You guys good? Okay.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M0725.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black? Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O225, matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to repeal Chapter 94 signs, repeal and replace Chapter 138 zoning, and repeal and replace the city of Berkeley zoning map in order to move sign regulations to the zoning ordinance, match the recommendations of the city's master plan, and modernize sign and zoning regulations.
Is there a motion to approve O0225?
So moved.
Motion made by councilmember Hannon?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Ms. Van Vlaak?
I'm going to push this over to our community development director.
Perfect. Ms. Kapalansky, hello again.
Good evening again. So this is an almost two-year effort that we're really happy to bring forward to you tonight. Megan Massen-Minock from Carlisle-Wartman, who was our consultant that helped on this project, is here to do a brief presentation, and we're both available for questions. I do want to take a moment to thank the steering committee that put in a lot of hours working on this. So thank you and kudos to them, and I will turn it over to Megan.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Megan Massen-Minock from Carlisle-Wartman Associates. It's a pleasure to be back here. And it's been a great pleasure to work with your steering committee and your planning commission throughout this process. So if you could go to the next slide. What is a zoning ordinance? I know a lot of you know this, but just for the folks out in the audience, it's the local law that sets rules for where things can go, what can go where, on what size parcel, how far a building is back from the property line, what landscaping is required, where parking spaces are, all the stuff that goes into a quality building. And it also defines where uses can go using a zoning map. And each zone, which has its different colors and its own set of rules, and some rules apply to all the zones, and those are called performance standards, and there's a section in those, of those as well. This, and what it, what it also does is it controls new buildings and the redevelopment of older buildings, and sometimes those rules are different. And we really looked at rebuilding the zoning ordinance, because it was last updated in 1993. So you all think about where you were in 1993, and how you got your information, how you went from one place to another, and what your average building or home looked like. It's changed a lot in 32 years, and you're, what we wanted to do is to have your rules catch up. And also, to do that catch up, what you had done as the city has often amended the zoning ordinance, and then it ended up having a lot of inconsistencies. The other thing that we wanted to do was to implement the master plan that you had done a couple of years ago, that we had the pleasure of being part of. And also, all of your design guidelines, you had a tremendous amount of work put into your downtown zoning, in your, in your downtown plan and design guidelines. And those, where we could, we made them standard, so that it's not a, we would like you to, it's a, you have to do this. And then also, and, and that's part of delivering that quality and type of development that Berkeley wants. Also, state law and federal law and case law is always changing, so they were up, the, this law, this ordinance is updated to comply with those. As Christian indicated, we had gone through almost a year and a half process, which this documents, but if you go to the next one. We're in the phase four, where we're at city council approval. So this was before planning commission for the public hearing on November 26th. There were a number of edits that were asked for. We brought that back in January 28th, on January 28th of this year, and they, the planning commission gave a, I think, a unanimous recommendation. Now it's before you for your first reading. We've gotten a number of comments from Councilman Hannon, and then also some from staff. So we fully expected that there would be some changes from what was before you night, and would welcome all your comments in terms of what needs to change to this draft ordinance before you, in order for you to feel comfortable adopting it. And I already said that, so, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I mean, I know it was a heavy lift, but I also know it was not only necessary to, to bring things into 2025. It will, I think it was the last piece for our redevelopment-ready community certification as well. So lots of reasons to update things and, and get things, you know, in place. And so that, I always said that, like, our ordinances and zoning should really look like they go with our master plan and, and the direction that we're going. They should all look like they belong together, so thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Councilmember Hannon?
Yeah, first, you know, we have been working on this a long time. The finished product is 330 pages of sometimes dense and technical reading. And really, when we started with this, I had no idea how you're going to tackle such a massive piece of work and, you know, make sure it was coherent at the end. But you pulled it off, you know, you expertly, you and city staff expertly worked us through the process, and I'm very pleased with where we're at. You know, I think we have the right balance of changes that are going to encourage business, but still protect Berkeley's character. And, you know, I'll just comment, it doesn't mean that we've got everything right here. There's still going to be some rough edges. And, you know, I want to encourage staff as you, and our boards, as you find things, you know, bring them to us, so we can rough those out, get things straightened out. As mentioned, I, you know, brought forward maybe a half dozen things that don't substantially change it, that we should, I think, see in the second reading that'll, you know, they aren't substantive changes, they're just minor corrections. One larger thing I think we do need to address is signs in section 11.08. And, you know, having some discussions with the city attorney this morning, I think it would be prudent if we modified that a little bit. And we're looking at is the maximum number of signs, temporary signs and residential. What I'm proposing instead of a number is just a maximum square feet of 24 square feet. And for both residential and non-residential districts, making the setback three feet instead of five feet, that matches our setback for permanent signs in other sections of the code. So just restating that again, that would be, instead of limiting a number, limiting the square feet in residential districts, 24 square feet total. You know, however you divvy up your signs among that. And then three foot setback instead of five. So that's the only substantive change that I'm proposing that I wanted to bring forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or councilmember Patterson?
A couple, two different things, both related to parking, though. Is that with this, or is this just signs?
It's the whole thing.
We'll go.
It's the overt.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the whole document, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So this is in the document on table 14.04, referencing the residential attached, single-family, multifamily housing. The space will be 1.3 plus one per every 10. I think that that's a little bit too much. I think the current of two is too much parking requirement. I think we're reducing it a lot. You know, I did some math here, just, you know, random numbers. If we have 50 units, that would only be 70 parking. And it's not based on bedrooms or, it's just units. So if it's a two-bedroom, which is, you know, three-bedrooms probably isn't as common, but I think that, you know, if they're one-bedroom, if you have a guest or a partner or anybody living with you, you're almost already there. And then I had a question about the planning commission allowing the 15% reduction to a developer. Is that, it went up from 10%, correct?
Yes.
So if we do that and apply the 15%, and now I realize the developers have to agree to that, but it's down to 60 spots. So a 50 unit is only getting 60 spots if they agree. You know, and then obviously the numbers, I did 60, and it would be 84 spots required. So, you know, it used to be 120, so I think that that's pretty substantial. The other thing is the parking overlay district. We've had discussions before. I think that it kind of encroaches on some of our neighborhoods, some streets for lots. I counted them today. We'll admit they're small boxes, but 139 lots potentially already allowed. Or this would allow that or encourage that if, understanding the developer would have to buy that. But it's encroaching in our neighborhoods, I think. And the developers currently have an avenue to buy a lot and have it rezoned by going to planning, correct? This, this makes it easier for them?
They, what this does is this, this would rezonate, so that the parking is a special land use. So they, and then anything that, it's an overlay zone, so anything that's underneath, so let's say it's a single-family residential zoning district, and the parking overlay is proposed over it. What that means is the single-family uses can continue and would still be permitted uses if a developer bought the property and then wanted to put a parking lot on it. They would need to get a special land use, which everybody within 300 feet is notified, and then it is, has a discretionary decision that's part of it. The other thing in the proposed zoning ordinance is additional parking standards and landscaping standards that would require fencing and buffering that hasn't been required before. And in terms of, back to your comment about the multiple family factor, I would say that's been the great debate of this process. And it's yinged and ganged in both sides, and this is where it landed on at the end. And that was also, and I'll let Ms. Kapalansky talk more about it if necessary, but also with the redevelopment-ready certification, that was one of the things that they were looking at, is what that multiple-family parking limit was. And it was, and some of the things that we had been considering, they felt. And it was, and some of the things that we had been considering, they felt might be too high.
Yeah.
So just for context.
No, and I was at those work sessions as well when we discussed it. From my memory, I thought we landed at one and a half, but I may be getting numbers mixed up in my head.
I think you landed at one and a half at that point. And then when it came back to planning commission, they felt it should have been one. We landed on one point three with the one guest space for every ten spaces in between as a compromise. Again, you're the deciding body on this. So if that's the deciding factor that you want to see in the second reading, and the majority of the members feel like that, we can absolutely make that change.
Thank you. Currently, though, like if I was a developer and wanted, without the parking overlay, I could still develop, buy a lot, have it rezoned for parking, and it would go through. We've done that before when I was on planning.
Yeah, you've done that before. It's a just, it's a much harder process.
Okay.
Just to confirm and build off of Councilmember Patterson, with our revisions that we made earlier this year with overnight parking permits, those do not apply to any kind of multifamily structures, correct? So that would not be something that is accessible for them if there was a shortage to Councilmember Patterson's comments of parking spaces?
Correct. That would not be something that's accessible to them. And if we were to change the multiple-family parking standard, I would want to run it back through the redevelopment-ready communities group because we are receiving some funding from them to pay for a good portion of the zoning ordinance. And that was one of the things that we went back and forth with them on quite a bit. Thank you.
I would just recommend one and a half. We're at two, if they're saying one, kind of in the middle is one and a half, at one point three. So, I mean, that's just my recommendation.
And I can run that by them. I don't, as a body, I don't think that the redevelopment-ready group is recommending two. They would, I don't think they would even listen to me at two at this point. But if the whole group would like to change that, I would want to run that by them.
Thank you. Any other, just Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, so I'll address a couple of things. The number of parking spots was the, by far, the most contentious issue with the steering committee. I personally went out multiple times to do audits, like, to do, you know, counts of how many cars were parking in our apartments at different times. And I'm very comfortable with this number. And, you know, based on, admittedly anecdotal, but, you know, the result of looking at what the actual use of parking spaces in Berkeley is. We're talking about, if you go by every ten, we're talking about fourteen per ten versus fifteen per ten units. So there's a small difference, but, you know, it, I think it does make a difference in bringing developers in. And I do think the data supports that we have, I would actually say my numbers show we could go less. So, but that's also not something I'm willing to do at this time. This is as far, as low as I'm even willing to go. So as far as the parking overlay, it's, we are reducing burden on several homes. Right now, several of those properties are zoned parking only. And that puts them, their residential development in a dead end. They really can't do anything with those properties because they are legal non-conforming and it makes financing hard and redevelopment hard. With the parking overlay, nobody, no resident is ever obligated to sell the house as parking. It can stay residential forever if they want. But if a developer comes and the resident, you know, agrees with the price, that gives a more streamlined way for us to redevelop properties. The issue we have is every commercial property in the city backs residential. And we often do not have enough parking. This gives an avenue for that and the added protections that we have now that require more buffering than we do now. So nobody's being forced out. It's all going to be optional. But if the parties come to an agreement, it is streamlined and time is money for developers. If we want older stock to be upgraded but still keep our character, those are the kind of things we need to accommodate.
Can I ask a?
Sure.
So you think it's okay on certain streets to have four lots now? So if you bought your house and you were housed three, that now you have three other lots to be, that were rezoned? With an overlay making it easier for a developer and less easy for?
So by your own argument, they also could come with traditional zoning and ask for the same thing. So I'll say, me personally, I live one house between me and the districts in Coolidge. So when I'm making, you know, a business on Coolidge, so I'm not asking other people to make sacrifices that don't apply to myself. Yeah, I, the reason for the, where the depth, you know, where the lines were drawn were to sort of make it match across the entire property line. There are some places where, you know, the residential and the business comes in deeper than other places. So it, you know, makes it sort of, as close as you can, a straight line across.
Megan, if you want to, I saw you wanting to say something.
Yeah. So in terms of Councilman Patterson, you give the scenario of the parking leapfrogging, so parking house, parking.
No, I thought that was switched. I'm saying, I live at lot number five. So now four lots from my corner are now a parking lot, which were residential before, potentially. Not, we got rid of, we got rid of the leapfrog, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what is my understanding of what you say, right. Yes, and I just, and we only, the zoning map only proposes to rezone to parking overlay those areas that were master planned for that transitional area from commercial in between residential. So between the master plan, what this is really doing is just implementing the master plan in a way that can keep property owners whole in terms of, because there are a number that are zoned parking now that are houses or another business. And it does impact their financing in terms of.
Do you know how many?
I think there are about three.
So three houses out of all of them, okay.
Yeah. And one of them is owned, I think, by the city. The house is gone now, so.
Two.
Any other questions or comments from council? Public comment?
Good evening, council. My name is Latrell Livingston. I am a twenty-three-year resident of Berkeley. And I also want to commend the city for doing this work to try to update our zoning ordinance. I don't have a problem with the core, most of this. I don't know about most of it. I'm here to talk about yard signs. I think that the proposal that has been put forth, and I appreciate that it's being evaluated, is unconstitutional, unwise, and unnecessary. The current ordinance proposes for a maximum of four signs. Councilman Henin has proposed a different restriction. I haven't really evaluated what that would actually really look like. But I still want you to remember that any restriction on speech must be narrowly tailored to pursue a government, important, significant government interest. And previously, Councilman Henin has suggested that this wasn't a hard and fast rule. It was just what feels like a reasonable number and that things start to get junky at a certain number. That's not narrowly tailored. Hopefully, you're looking at something that will be narrowly tailored. This is a concern for me. I live on a very small lot. The ordinance also says that the signs may not be placed more than five feet of a parcel line or ten feet radius of a driveway, sidewalk intersection, and not within five-foot radius of a sidewalk, sidewalk intersection. Most of us in Berkeley live on very small lots. In my house, that's going to restrict a lot of what we can do. The limit of four is going to affect my family. Right now, I have a Black Lives Matter and a "Hate Has No Home" sign in my front yard. This spring, I hopefully will have a Rogers fifth-grade graduate sign to add to them. And I am certainly not interested in having to choose what political speech that I want to do in addition to those three signs. We are at a time in America where political speech is so important. And I don't believe this ordinance furthers anything that really matters to the residents of Berkeley. I think that it's unconstitutional, it's not narrowly tailored, we may face a lawsuit when we bring it, and it doesn't serve anything that anyone really cares about. We just went through a very contested political election where that freedom of speech, no matter where you stand on issues, I saw signs throughout the city. I want to be able to put those signs up. I want to be able to keep those signs up in order to pursue my core political speech. And I ask you that before you act to restrict that, you think very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Councilmember, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, am I allowed to ask a question?
No, there's no, no, there's no interaction, it's just your.
Four square feet were mentioned earlier, was that for a sign or total number of signs? Twenty-four square feet, which is six foot by four foot? Anybody?
Some up to the total number of signs.
Total, so in other words, I could have twenty-four one-by-one signs, right?
Yes.
Wow, that's amazing, thank you.
Any other public comment? Councilmember Black, how are you? I just, I, all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, I haven't heard from you. Is, I don't know if there's a better way. I can ask you every time if you want to weigh in because I can't even see a raise-hand function or anything. But is, do you have any questions or comments about this?
No, I, echoing the second-to-last public comment, I feel very strongly about this because I wear a American flag patch on my right shoulder and fight for people's right to express themselves and have free unrestricted speech. So I think that there's definitely some work that we need to do.
Thank you. Okay, it appears that there is no more discussion from council, no more questions. Moving.
Yeah, I guess just a, thank you, Your Honor. Just, I do, in terms of the, so two core items have been brought out of the entirety of the three-hundred-something pages, which itself is commendable to the committee and the staff for putting forward such a thoughtful and well-architected plan here. I think that's great. Regarding the parking stuff, I too feel that the one point three is reasonable number. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it as proposed. And my concern with the signs is similar to those expressed. I like, I'm interested in the idea of exploring some kind of a total real estate type of thing. Because I, I don't know, I mean, I guess it would be a free speech thing to have the whole yard just completely, you know, encased like a fence with yard signs. So I'd like to see some more work done on exploring that and making sure that we don't restrict the type of sign that could be placed as part of this. I think it's important if, you know, whatever allotment of real estate we allow, I'd like to have the homeowner the opportunity to choose any signs that they want to put, rather than saying a limited number of this sign versus that sign. Because who's to decide what's political speech and what's not?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another option that could be explored that, with many of our other clients when we're redoing their sign regulations, is to have a special provision that during sixty days before an election season, election, and fourteen days after, there is, you specifically recognize that time for more political speech and that the square footage provisions can be loosened and the number of signs can be unlimited of the temporary signs. And before, you know, if we were doing this in nineteen ninety-three or even ten years ago, you could have defined a political sign differently from a temporary sign. But there is a U.S. Supreme Court case, and I'll defer to your counsel to give you more information about that. But it essentially said that you can't regulate a sign by the type of sign it is if you have to read it. So a political sign versus a real estate sign, all of those, if you really read the red lines of the proposal, all of those definitions are coming out. And so we have to regulate them as temporary signs. But recognizing that, many communities have recognized that during election season, political speech is very important and didn't want to limit that speech at that time. And so there are provisions that we could explore for the second reading on those if you wanted.
Thank you. So, City Manager Van Black, where does this leave us? Because we've had quite a bit of input on signs and parking and parking overlays and.
Yeah, I see there being two changes, two proposed changes. And I don't know if these should be dealt with separately so that you guys, when a second reading comes, you guys can, don't have to vote on signs with parking.
Correct.
So, Victoria, how should we, how does the second, when we bring the second reading forward, how should we do that in a way, or do you want to talk about this for the next meeting? Because I think they need to be dealt with separately.
Yes.
Well, I think, I'll defer to Mr. Chris. But would the, I think the staff needs clear direction on what to bring forward in the second reading, or if you would like another first reading?
Yeah, like with today's motion, that needs to be cleared.
Yeah, I have a question for Kristin, and maybe it's a question for council. Or I've been in Berkeley since 2008. I don't ever remember Kristin, yard signs being an issue. So I'm trying to understand why are we restricting something that, that I guess I'm personally not seeing as an issue and have never seen as an issue?
Something that we can just, that we can remove specifically the language of yard signs and table to a different time or work session or agenda for purposes of of just dealing with the, this draft? Or is this something that we have to vote on as is tonight?
So there's a couple different responses I have. One, the sign ordinance is part of the zoning ordinance draft. So it is one document. So I think separating them out would be hard. We could repeal the sign ordinance in the city code as it is currently, but what's replacing it is the entire zoning ordinance. So I think we have to deal with them as a group. But secondarily, so the current zoning ordinance right now restricts signs based on the type of sign. And as Megan was saying, we can't look at the content of the signs. So for example, garage sale signs are something that is, has regulations attached to it, political campaign signs. There are certain signs that are listed as exempt, and those are political and garage sale signs. But there are other types of temporary signs that do have regulations. So with this recent Supreme Court case, we have to lump all of these things in together as one temporary sign because we're not allowed to look at what it says to determine what kind of sign it is. So we could say, you can have as many temporary signs as you want all of the time and see how that goes, if that's what council chooses to do. We were trying to come up with a little bit of a compromise where we restrict temporary signs somewhat so that, for example, if I have a construction business and I have, you know, little construction signs that say "work done by Smith Construction", if we have no restrictions on temporary signs and I live at my house, I could fill my yard with Smith Construction signs, you know, row after row after row. And it becomes kind of like an advertising mechanism in the front yard there. That would be the worst-case scenario, I would think, with something of talking about totally removing restrictions for temporary signs. It's probably not going to be a problem. We haven't seen things like that pop up in the community, but it could.
And just to add, if I could, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Councilwoman Black, under the current sign ordinance, it's my understanding that currently in the single-family residential zone district, the maximum size area is currently six square feet with a maximum height of four feet and a setback of five feet. And as proposed, it would be increased, the square footage with respect to that zone district, to twenty-four square feet.
And if I could add one more thing, the setbacks were brought up, and you just reminded me of that, City Attorney Chris. So the setbacks from sidewalks and driveways and things, that's a safety item to make sure that when people are pulling.
make sure that when people are pulling in and out of their driveways and things, there's not signage blocking their way or anything blocking their way, so they don't see pedestrians and things, and, and other people or cars coming down the way. So, that setback is in there for a safety reason.
It would be good to get some direction.
Yeah, it would be good to get direction on, on, on those two things. And I would separate them, because I feel like those two issues aren't linked in terms of the signs. In, in my opinion, to keep the spirit of the regulations you have now, which say political signs are exempt, what I would recommend is that you direct us to put in a clause that sixty days before election and fourteen days after, there can be an unlimited amount of temporary signs, and just leave it as that. That is what you, and, and I would, but I would keep them to abide by the setbacks, and because that's a safety reason.
But is that a content issue as well? I mean, when you say political signs, now you're...
Yeah, no, we've done this in dozens of communities in terms of their sign regulations since the Supreme Court case. Again, recognizing that at the time of campaigns, at the time of elections, there is more need for political speech, and so you as a community are recognizing that and that it should be, it should be unlimited in this fashion.
But that would be unlimited for all temporary signs.
Right.
Yes, not just political signs, because, yeah.
Mr. Chris, did you have something you wanted to...
I'm not going to debate it, I mean, whoever council, council wants to land on it, I, you know, I think the two issues that were raised and noted, uh, in the ACLU commu- communication was with respect to the limitation in the proposed sign, proposed zoning ordinance as it relates to temporary signs of a number. Uh, and secondarily, secondarily, uh, the issue of the setback issue. And, uh, Councilman Hennan has proposed to address both of those issues in a way which I believe, uh, is narrowly tailored to achieve the city's goal. Uh, it's legitimate, uh, and significant, uh, s- public, uh, goal with respect to its zoning. So, I think that that achieves, uh, the, the goal, whether that's the right, uh, square footage, uh, or the, the right setback, I defer to, you know, council collectively to decide what that right number is. But, but the rationale on the setback, as Kristen noted, uh, is a aesthetic as well as a, a public safety concern with respect to visibility. Uh, and, um, the square footage really goes to, uh, at some point, a, a blighting and aesthetic issue, which is, which the courts have noted is a legitimate is, in, interest for, for governments to regulate.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Valani?
Uh, so, I agree, I think, with many of my colleagues about the setback issue and the commentary you brought forth from a safety perspective. Like, I even think about my own home, I live on a corner, so I try to be cautious when I put stuff out, so people can see it's a highly traversed area. My concern with, I also understand the blight, all these reasons why we would want to, for lack of a better word, community beautification, we would want to limit. However, I just think in this current political environment, defining what is a political sign starts to get tricky, because so many things that are so important to so many people have become politicized in recent time, and I think that people want to have that ability to, whether it's show support for something, um, to just voice where they stand in a very divided nation, I think it's a, I realize that this is just when we're doing our zoning, but it's just, it's coming at a less-than-optimal time to put re- to put limitations on, and I'm not comfortable with that.
Councilmember Vayner?
Uh, thank you, your honor, this has been really insightful additional dialogue. Uh, I, I like the idea of going from six square feet to twenty-four square feet or something to that effect, that gives, uh, four times this amount of signage of whatever dimensions a, a person or a family chooses to use. Um, the setback, I'm kind of oscillating between the three or the five, I think the safety implications are, are paramount to me. And then again, two points, uh, that I, I thought I heard, so I'll just clarify, we're not allowed to decide whether something is a political sign or not, so that helps with my colleague's question or concern, in that we will not be deciding if it's a political sign or not, it's just, there's a sign there, and are there too many of them, based on square footage, if that's the way we choose to take it. I definitely like the idea of not going by a specific number, like four, um, but having a square footage gives folks a lot more latitude in the shape and size of the signs that they choose to, uh, to, to voice their perspectives. Yes, please.
And, uh, and just, just for clarity, the, the new proposed ordinance does not, uh, make any reference to political signs at all. Now, all signs, if it's of a temporary nature, are, is a temporary sign. So, in an example would be a real estate sign. Uh, that would be, you know, that's a temporary sign, uh, and a, uh, any other type of message that is on a portable, non-permanent, uh, sign post, that would be a temporary sign, and the city would not have, uh, any, uh, regulatory scheme with respect to that content at all. That, that would be up to the property owner as to what message they wish to convey.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah, could I propose that we maybe do a straw poll on not what the limit is, just, I think we're all agreeance there should be setbacks for safety reasons. But, uh, then just the question, um, should there be a limit or shouldn't there? Just, you know, yes, limit, no limit, not defining what that is yet. If the majority of us say no limit, then we, you know, can move on, you know, from it.
My question, my, so my question would be, are we, are we, are we leaning into freedom or against it? And I think, if we take that temperature check, I think that is what should guide us. I think we have to lean into freedom. For the homeowner, for our city, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Valani, I think this is, I don't want to do anything that makes any homeowner feel, or anyone feel like their freedoms are being limited. I mean, again, I, I don't, I am trying to recall in my fifteen years of residency when I have ever seen this be an issue. So, I am, I am struggling with this one admittedly, because I just, I cannot think of an example where it's been an issue. And if anybody has a great example, man, I'm all ears.
Councilmember Hennan?
It perhaps hasn't been an issue, because we currently have a law in the books that, while it was constitutional when passed and is currently unconstitutional, but still implies that there are a limit, um, we don't know if that is the reason that people haven't gone hog wild. Will this actually become a problem? I don't know. Is there a, um, constitutional limit where we can put a number? Yeah, there's a number somewhere. Do we know what it is? No, the case law hasn't evolved far enough. We know it's more than two. That's about as much as we can say, uh, at this point with case law. This isn't a hill that we're dying on, you know? It's, um, uh, you know, if it becomes a big issue, we can, uh, come, you know, come back to it. But, um, discussing freedom, there, we also live in a tight-knit civil, you know, society where, uh, my actions, for example, putting a sawmill on the back of my business can impact my neighbors. So, um, the, part of the, uh, civil agreement and living together is those compromises so that, um, uh, yeah, someone probably thinks that four signs is too much, some people probably think one sign is too much. But, uh, we have those compromises so that, um, people still can have their, uh, free speech uses, but also without the, um, just going completely overboard and the visual clutter, that, uh, there is an established, um, principle at some point that the government does have an interest in, um, regulating.
Thank you. May, Councilmember...
I just have one, so, um, having had signs in my yard, uh, when it comes to cut the grass, they, um, kind of self-limit themselves, um, because they are a chore. Um, blight would still apply if the lawn wasn't kept up, correct? I mean, if we have unlimited number, so, I mean, it would still just be, they would have to move them to mow or we-whack or whatever, but, I mean, why, why limit it at all?
Mayor Proton Gavin?
If we didn't limit it at all, could potentially someone have fifty-yard signs?
Yes.
In their yard? Okay, yeah, right. So, I think that, I, I frankly echo comments made by Councilmember Hennan, I think, you know, I, there are reasonable requirements that can be put into place without suppressing free speech, and the courts have spoken to those. So, I, that's kind of where I land on this.
Yes?
Yeah, I, um, I love, I love the idea of just letting the, letting the homeowners work it out, and, um, so I'm on the, the no-limit, uh, side, uh, again, thinking back to setbacks for safety. But, um, I'd rather wait to see if there's a problem and then we can adjust to it, um, you know, and further revisions to the, to the, um, to the zoning.
Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah, I will say, although we will, if it becomes a problem, and if we look at it in a content-neutral way, the message on the sign then becomes part of the issue, whatever it is. So, no matter what, you know, if we say, that's too many signs, we need to regulate this, someone will say, well, you are only regulating that because of the content of my sign. Um, so, after the fact can become very difficult.
I'll be giving you advice to delay any effective date of such future, uh, limitation.
Okay, so, is there something you wanted to add to this? Because why not?
No, I think, I think we just need guidance coming forward, because I believe in, Attorney Chris, tell me if I'm wrong, but unless we have exact language of how we want to amend this, it will be that we are not approving the first reading, and we'll come back with another first reading with changes, unless we have very specific language on how we want to amend it. Is that right?
Well, it, it sounded like they're getting ready for a vote, but yet, yet, I think, yes, they would like...
But this is only piece one, this is just signs.
Right, we still have parking.
We still have parking.
Chipmunks, yeah.
All part of one. Stop payment.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, right now, we have the setback, are we three feet? Okay, so then it's limiting to a number or not at all? And if...
To space.
To space.
Twenty-four.
Sorry.
Or number, but yes.
Space, yeah. Or no limitation of space. And so if we are saying we're, we want to limit by space, we have to say what that space is. Okay, so right now on the table is the, um, the square fe- six, uh, sorry.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, um, square feet. Twenty-four square feet? I'm just trying to break this down.
No, no, twenty-four, is that sign size or plot size?
Square footage.
Square footage.
Of the sign or...
Of all signs.
Of all signs. So, I could have a ten-foot, or a four-foot sign, a height, and then a three-foot, and then a two-foot.
You have a four-by, four-by-three, that's twelve, you could have two, four-by-threes, or you could have a two-by...
It's not land being used, it's sign, size.
So, what's...
It's limiting you to the total number of square footage of your temporary signs.
Okay, not, not square footage of my lawn.
No, not square footage of your lawn.
Okay, okay.
It's vertical, not horizontal.
No, no, it's, it's the signage rather than anything to do with your particular...
They come out, this is my sign, it's this size, not looking at the carpet square saying twelve-by-twelve is twenty-four, okay.
Right. Kristen, did you have something to add?
Oh, I, I was just going to point out that the ordinance, as it's drafted right now, does limit each sign area in the residential districts to six square feet. So, you have twenty-four square feet total, but each of those signs could be a maximum of six square feet.
Oh.
So, then it would be four, but you could take off the twenty-four square, the six square feet and eliminate that, or, and you could eliminate the maximum sign area. I think, though, Councilman Hennan's idea of restrict, whether you want to restrict it at all, is a good idea, when I've been writing down what people have been saying, I think you have five people leaning towards unlimited, not restricting temporary signs in terms of square footage or number. Um, and I only heard two people who had said that they wanted to restrict it.
Accurate.
The question...
Yes.
And, uh, Kristen question or Crystal question, who would enforce this? I mean, is this, is this neighbors telling on themselves, are we hiring somebody to go out, is this our, our safety department?
It would be a code enforcement issue, but it'd be complaint-based, or if we saw something particularly egregious, we would stop, but mostly it's going to come in through complaints.
Councilmember Hennan?
So, it sounds like, uh, Mayor Proton Gavin and I are the only ones for limits, and so, um, I'm comfortable with no limits.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, that's the will of the other members up here.
Okay. So, we have a setback and we have no limits?
Yes.
Okay, so that's signs. Do you need any other direction from us regarding signs?
No.
Okay, on to parking. Um, because we discussed that so long ago, where are we now on that? So, I, we heard your concerns, um, Councilmember Patterson, um, is, I guess, what are the concerns of other council members? Where are we landing on this? Councilmember Valani?
Aligned with Councilmember Patterson.
Okay. Proton?
Uh, no, I think as proposed, I'm in favor of it as proposed.
I'm good as proposed?
As proposed.
As proposed.
Okay, do you have that direction? Oh, Councilmember Black! Geez, I am so sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm good with that.
As proposed.
No limits.
We're on, yeah.
Park, thank you.
Minor delay.
Okay, that's okay, thank you. Okay, good. All right, so, the original motion maker, Councilmember Hennan, with support from Mayor Proton Gavin, are you guys good with these changes? Do we have to do that before we vote?
Changes.
Yeah, are you okay with the changes?
Yes.
Yes?
That's fine.
Okay, great. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-0225.
Valani?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
No.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Patterson?
No.
Dean?
Yes. So, how many is that?
Four.
Four. Motion passed. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's regular agenda.
Ordinance number O-325, matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section one-zero-six dash one-zero-seven, restricted area in section one-zero-six dash one-zero-eight, shrubs and bushes of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to address inconsistencies between the draft zoning ordinance and certain provisions of the city code.
Is there a motion to approve O-0325?
So, moved.
Motion may be, Councilmember Hennan?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson, Ms. Van Black.
I'm going to, um, give this one over to Director Kapalansky as well.
Perfect.
So, this is a pretty easy follow-up to the, the, um, item you just voted on. There is a section in the city code that deals with corner clearance, which basically shows us the area where you shouldn't put anything, um, that would become a hindrance, kind of like we were talking about with the signs to vehicles and pedestrians and things passing by. This makes sure that that section of the city code matches the recommendations of the zoning ordinance that would just approve for first reading.
Okay, questions or discussion from council? Public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-0325?
Baker?
I don't want to beat around the bush with this thing, so I'll say yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend chapter 110 subdivision and combination of land of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to clarify lot split in combination procedures consistent with the current city procedures, and to add chapter 109 subdivisions to provide regulations for subdivision development.
Is there a motion to approve O-0425?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Valani. Are we just going right to Ms. Kapalansky?
Um, so this is a companion piece, really, to the zoning ordinance that you just saw. In the course of the development of that, um, it came to our attention that we did not have a subdivision ordinance, um, so Carlisle Wortman was, uh, kind enough to help us out with that as well, as part of their general consulting services, and I will let Megan go over the subdivision ordinance, um, in a little bit more detail, but there was also some changes that are proposed to the, uh, land combination ordinance, so there's some very outdated procedures in there, and they're not at all how we operate and how we interact with the current assessing office over at the county, so we wanted to go ahead and update those procedures so that they match what our current policies are.
Thank you.
So this proposed chapter is, if there is ever a new site condominium or new plat in the city, yeah, and I, I, I saw a giggle, and it's going to, if that happens, it would be an extraordinary circumstance for your city, because you would either be annexing or taking over some property from one of your neighbors, or a major piece of property was undergoing redevelopment. What this lays out, um, is the definitions, where, and with the definitions, we made every attempt possible to make sure that they were the same as what's in the proposed zoning ordinance, um, and then the subdivision procedure, which, um, matches state law, and be, and it's a very onerous procedure, um, between preliminary flats, final flats, and whatnot, that's the state law, most people who are developing land don't take that route, they take a site condominium route, however, your zoning ordinance for site condominiums is going to refer back to these regulations, so that if, when people are laying out things like streets, access to property, blocks, where the intersection should be, alleys, street names, building numbers, pedestrian ways, requiring sidewalks, et cetera, all those things that are in the design guidelines, the design standards in, in this, um, would then apply to that, so this is your design belts and suspan, belts and, belts and suspenders, and then when there were things like the perimeter of block, what that should be, we measured on aerial photographs that number, so that number, the maximum and minimum, is the number that you have in your community, so we really wanted to make sure that your patterns, if this ever happened, would be the same and keep the same fabric that makes Berkeley Berkeley. Um, there are also things like restricted covenants, um, subdivision improvements, um, where things should be, street trees, um, et cetera, um, performance bonds, all of those things that you want to have in place to make sure that developers do what they said they're going to do, and that your DPW gets everything that they need, um, so that they can, and so that your utilities work, your streets function, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from council? Councilmember Black?
I have no comment on this one, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, well, any public comment on this one? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O-0425.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's regular agenda.
Ordinance number O-525, matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend chapter 26 buildings and building regulations to adopt Article Nine Engineering Design Standards, and to repeal section 126 through seventy-one, through 126 dash, through seventy-five, and Article Five of chapter 126 of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion to approve O-0525?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Kapalansky?
Thank you. Um, so this is something else that came out of our zoning ordinance work, and it's a project that was a joint project between Community Development and the Department of Public Works, and we, um, enlisted the services of HRC to come up with some engineering design standards. There were a couple of reasons we wanted to move forward with this project, there are several different standards right now that are scattered throughout the city code, so if I'm coming in and I want to redevelop a commercial property, I am searching through the city code and trying to figure out between the different inconsistencies what I'm supposed to do for my grading and my pavement base and all of these other things that come up in the course of development. This puts all of those things in one place, so developers can find them easily, and it also makes it easier for the zoning ordinance to refer to this document instead of all of the different city code sections, so we're making sure to cut down on those inconsistencies, um, in the future. This includes standards for roads, utilities, and stormwater, and I will defer to Sean if anything comes up on specific questions on those. Um, as I said, this goes hand-in-hand with the zoning ordinance, and we're really coming up with a complete package of standards for people who want to develop and redevelop in the city. There are some instances in here when the standards have been tailored to Berkeley where it makes sense, so for example, um, the most prominent example of that is the, uh, Oakland County right now requires stormwater detention for sites an acre or larger, well, that doesn't really help us a whole lot here, because most of our sites are not larger than an acre, um, so we have tailored to the design standards to require detention for much smaller properties, um, so that we are improving our stormwater system while still allowing for the development and redevelopment of those properties, and making sure that it matches what we can do here in the city. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those, as I said, um, Sean is here as well, and, uh, we look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you, any questions, uh, from council? Councilmember Black?
Matt?
I think we're losing you, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just want to make sure if you have, you know, want to have input, that you have the opportunity to do that. Okay, we can come back if he wants to, um, weigh in on this, and any public comment on this agenda item? Okay. Councilmember Black, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good, Madam Mayor, apologies.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O-0525.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dean.
Yes, the ordinance has passed. Well, we're at our communications.
Councilmember Henon.
All right, thank you. Um, the Tree Board, uh, met, uh, last month, um, they're continuing to look for possibilities for grant opportunities, and preparing a recap of their 2024 accomplishments and setting their goals for 2025, uh, their next meeting was, uh, tonight, so, during this one. Uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals had no cases in February and have no cases in March, uh, and then my next talk with Dennis Office Hours will be, uh, this Saturday, uh, March first, from noon to two PM at the library, stop by with any questions or concerns you have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Committee for Engagement and Transparency did not meet this month due to the snow emergency, so they will be meeting on March 12th, and that is all I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson?
Um, Planning Commission, I'm just looking at our new website, which looks great, um, tomorrow's meeting is canceled, so we won't be meeting tomorrow, or, um, Thursday, tomorrow, if you were planning on that, and the Unification Committee does not meet, um, in the winter, which is great, um, it is, we're winding down our heart month, so, uh, you still have a couple of days to wear red, if you so wish to support those with heart and heart-related diseases, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valani.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, would like to remind you that there is a native plant sale coming up on June first from ten to two, and that will be held at the Community Center, so for all of you who have been enjoying this, uh, very warm weather that we had today, and are maybe starting to think about your gardens already, uh, they'll be able to help you out with that. Uh, no updates from the Berkeley Area Chamber, um, and I do have a couple of thank-yous that I want to put out there, so while I love every single one of our departments for different reasons, there are two that I want to give some shout-outs to this week. Um, first off, with all of the snow emergencies that we have had over the past couple of weeks, it feels like the kids have never been in school, if you have any that are at home, um, despite all of that going on, um, when I leave for the gym at five-thirty in the morning, our roads are clear, and then when I get to that city that is next to us, they're disastrous, so like, it's a very marked difference about how well-maintained our roads are, uh, even in the wee hours of the morning, so a big thanks to, um, all of the crew that have been keeping the roads clear, uh, and safe for everybody to travel and get where they need to go when it is cold and dark outside, so that is much appreciated, and then also, a huge thank you to our public safety, so while we see they do a lot of great things, and you might see some of them on Facebook or other places where we're often commending them what's going on, um, recently in our neighborhood group chat, one of my neighbors, uh, sent out a note like, "Hey ladies, um, I just had our fire inspector come over, he checked all of the fire alarms in my house and tested them, found some places where new ones needed to be replaced, added in CO2 directors, and he did all of that for free and was in and out and super rational, you should all get that done." We have grant dollars that are helping to support this, so, uh, wanted to remind everybody that our public safety is there to help out for preventing emergencies as well, and then also, uh, commending our detectives, especially our school resource officer, uh, for some really great work, uh, that they did recently, uh, for something that was going on and impacting very negatively many of our high schoolers, which hit very close home to me, um, as the parent of a high schooler, so, uh, thank you for all that you're doing to keep our children safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, for Parks and Rec, uh, registration for Winter Two classes is ongoing, uh, and available on our new recreation registration site powered by the DaySmart Recreation, uh, website can be reached by visiting the city's website, uh, and clicking on the Parks and Rec programs under the sign-up on the main page. Uh, additionally, registration for Spring Break Vacation Camp is open, uh, and the camp itself will run from Monday, March 24th through Thursday, March 27th, and registration is available online. Uh, the next meeting of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is March 13th at seven PM at the Community Center, uh, and as for the Library Board, the February 12th meeting was canceled, uh, and so the next meeting will be March 19th at seven PM at the library, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker.
Hey, that's me, thank you. Uh, Historical Committee, uh, would like to spotlight that they have a new exhibit in the museum called Memories of 12 Mile, and there's over eighty pictures, uh, of stores and storefronts and things, ranging from the nineteen twenties to the early two thousands, and that'll be available in the museum until mid-March, so we still have a couple of weeks yet to get in there and enjoy, and, uh, recollect and recall and have fun with and reminisce on our, on our downtown and 12 Mile in particular, how it's evolved over the years. And speaking of downtown, our DDA, uh, Board met on Wednesday, the 12th, um, uh, our new director, our interim director Jennifer Finney, uh, was steady at the helm, uh, keeping everything going, and, and, uh, she fits right in, because she has served in this role in the past, so it was a great, a great opportunity to welcome her back. Uh, we discussed, uh, the marquee, the, uh, the marquee which is on the, the building, um, nearly adjacent to us here, uh, that used to be, uh, Rite Aid, they talked about ideas and options for keeping that thing going, and they ended up approving, um, a spending which was in their budget to, um, do interior maintenance to the, to the structure of the marquee, to, to make it more stable and secure, uh, so that it, that it can continue to, to be a, uh, amazing landmark for us. Uh, we talked about, um, placemaking opportunities at, uh, Robina and 12 Mile, and we also talked, uh, Dorothea and Coolidge, uh, there will be a working group, um, coming together, I think in March, uh, to, um, to explore ideas about, um, doing some form of a pilot experiment, uh, to, uh, to activate that space and see in what ways we can enjoy it. Uh, for more information on historical, visit BerkeleyHistory.com, and for more information on, uh, the downtown, there's DowntownBerkeley.com. Uh, and finally, it was Sarah McLean who once said, "Uh, the best partnerships are not dependent on a mere common goal, but on a shared path of equity, equality, desire, and no small amount of passion." In our context, um, recently I had the, the great pleasure and opportunity to meet with representatives of the school district, uh, the superintendent and several of the folks from the school board, I joined myself and the mayor and the city manager, you may have additional comments on that as well. It reflects a, a strong partnership between these two organizations, um, as you, as you probably know, the school district is separate from the city, uh, they're different, uh, different functions and different administrations and different funding, um, and it's great to, uh, to collaborate with them and better understand the projects that they have underway, uh, based on the approval of the millage, uh, a little ways back, uh, or the bonds a little ways back, they will be, um, um, conducting more visible construction in the next twelve to eighteen months, so it's nice to, to see that they're continuing to make progress with theirs, we shared with them some of our projects, including the, the aforementioned, uh, Dorothea, uh, and it's just great to have inter, uh, interactions around timing of construction to make sure that what they're working on, like, um, across from the high school doesn't interfere with the work that we're planning to do, which is adjacent to the work that they're doing, things like that were really good, that's, those are signs of good partnerships, and I'm glad that we have great partnerships here within the city and our departments, and to see those, uh, extended with the, um, with the school district is fantastic as well, so, uh, I'm grateful for that, um, and I'd just like to, to say, please, everyone hug somebody you love, uh, as we're still in the winter, even despite this beautiful weather we've, we've seen, uh, somebody needs that hug, so, uh, please do that for them and for you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Vleek.
Um, I'll just expand a little bit on what Councilmember Baker was, uh, talking about with the Dorothea Working Group, so we are going to be meeting on March 13th at five-thirty at Coffee and Bark, and anyone is invited, so anyone who wants to participate in the conversation of how we will activate that closure for a pilot period, um, and, and I do want to emphasize that that is the basis for this, we encourage anyone who has stake in the downtown and, and is looking to help us, um, really put our brains together to think about how we can activate that space, um, the group itself will, will make a decision on how long the closure is, will come to council with that, and then how to activate it over time, and, and also, to your point, Councilmember Baker, we have, um, I think we have some student participation in it as well, so that will be really neat.
That's great.
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I have no legal report tonight.
Thank you. So my commu, my communication's a little stale, because it was, it was meant for the February, um, meeting, the, the sixth, was it, or the third, whatever, the first meeting of February, which got canceled, so, a little bits, a little bit of it's a little old, but it's still pertinent, um, so, I was on two, uh, Teams meetings, uh, the first one on Thursday, January 30th with, um, Senator Slotkin, she invited, um, mayors and city managers, and this was, I'm telling you, it was a non-participatory meeting, but I got a lot of information, there were a ton of people on the call, so, she touched on the federal funding freeze, um, and at that point, uh, January 30th, the blanket, uh, funding pause had been revoked, but she communicated that she, um, she is aware of, um, there's some very real angst with people who are dependent upon this funding, and she's, she sees it, she hears it, she, she's doing everything she can, um, so she just asks for some grace and to bear with her and her team as they navigate, and so the, the federal departments are navigating these, um, uncharted waters, and, um, as they navigate this changing landscape, to please have some patience. We were given, um, Immigration Resources information, um, if we should need them, and she also, she talked about congressionally-directed spending, and so this is an opportunity to get federal resources into our community, so we were encouraged to think about projects that we wanted to bring forth, um, to utilize those funds, I did speak with city manager Van Vleek about that, and I know that she and her team are working on this now, um, just identifying the projects in Berkeley that we could submit for that funding, and lastly, she touched upon housing and the scarcity of it, especially workforce housing, um, and we know that that's an issue not just in Berkeley, but across the state and, and across the nation. Piggybacking, right after that, um, we were with Congresswoman Stevens and... Piggybacking right after that, um, we were with Congresswoman Stevens, and that was a more intimate meeting, there were probably thirty of us, and everybody, um, mayor or city manager from each community shared about their communities and what was happening, what was going on, so, um, but the takeaway there too, she, um, talked about housing again, and supply and the cost of housing is an issue everywhere, so, it might feel good to not feel alone in this, but, um, it is definitely an, an issue that needs to be tackled. Winterfest, um, Superintendent McMinn's here, thank you so much again for a great event, um, your team did an outstanding job. It was ridiculously cold that day, and I took my grandson, who's four, and we got there and he's looking around and he's like, baby, I want to do all the things, but he mostly stayed at one thing, so it, it was fine, we had a great time, and I especially want to thank, too, um, all the sponsors, Steelers, Moms Club, Dad's Club, um, Sox, Friends of Berkeley, Parks and Rec, Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance, HRC, and Smart, without which their support, this event could not take place, so we thank you. Um, and deep, I know Councilmember Valani has her favorites today, my, uh, DPW, I just really want to commend you guys for the incredible work. You had so many water main breaks, I don't know, I lost count, I'm sure you have not, but, um, I really appreciate, and I know that this is these extreme temperatures, whether it's heat or cold, bring it on, and the aging infrastructure and the pipe materials, I know that, that, those are all factors and probably more that I am not aware of, but thank you, um, for doing your job tirelessly, and I know some of, the latest one at the Legion was probably the Mac Daddy of, uh, all water main breaks. Um, congratulations to Rachel Patterson on her second year with the Clerk's Office. I, too, would like to welcome Jennifer Finney in her interim role, um, as the DDA, um, executive director. And then I, my latest stop on the Mayor's Roadshow was at Almond's on Saturday, I was there from twelve to two, I don't know where the next one will be at, but watch, um, Instagram and Facebook, um, because that's where I make those announcements, but I had, um, a great couple hours just talking to residents and, um, hearing their concerns, or what about this, and, um, all the things that they love about Berkeley, so, um, it not only feeds my soul, but it helps me to also understand what people are thinking about and what's important to them. So I want to thank Uli, um, for that time, and if you own a Berkeley business and would like me to stop by, um, for a set day and time, I'm happy to do that, just reach out and I'm, we'll set something up. So after that, um, I went home for, to regroup, and then, uh, we went to Legato Salon and Spa in Berkeley for their ribbon cutting, they are in the former Copycat Space, and it was just, they had a, an incredible turnout, and the salon looks beautiful, and I wish them much success. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Well, motion made by Councilmember Patterson, support by Councilmember Valani. But Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Dean?